Go ahead on call this special call meeting to order. We do have a court so we can conduct business. At this time, I'm going to ask Councilwoman Jackson. Do you wish to give us application?
Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day, for this opportunity to give your name the glory and the honor that it's due. Lord God, we just thank you for each and every person that's represented here. Lord God, we just ask that our minds be bound to your will and yours alone. Lord God, use us for your will, for your desire, for your purpose. Lord God, we just thank you for this city, thank you for the citizens of this city. Lord God, we just thank you that unity resides. We give your name all the glory and honor in Jesus' holy, precious, and righteous name. We pray. Amen.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. Roll call, Council President Bowie here. Councilman Bowley, Councilwoman Youngblood, Councilwoman Maude Jackson.
Here.
Councilwoman Angela Benjamin, Councilman Summerie Randolph, Councilman Gemma LaShaw.
Here.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Here.
And Councilman, um...
Here.
Johnson. Yeah, Johnson. Yeah, Johnson. Councilmen, we have before four items to discuss for this design that this special call made. We have illman police chief selection, contracts, employee holidays, and other related business matter.
Mr. President, as it referred to the interim police chief, I would think it would be a wise and prudent decision of this council that we would name Captain Johnny King the interim chief for the next eight months. We're on the eve of a new election. And who said that, who knows what council people's going to be here or what mayor? Uh, Mr. President, I sit in on all the interview for the police chief, and there was a concern by one of the candidates as it relates to what I just said. I think Captain King is very capable. He has served as the interim chief before. I think he will keep some continuity within the police department. And I think we should give him the charge of leading the Selma Police Department until there's a new administration. That would be my recommendation. And I would like to put a motion on the floor that you name him the interim chief for the next eight months until the next new administration comes here.
Okay, uh, I do concur with you with Captain King, but however, I don't waste time. Uh, we've gone through an interview process. We have taken applicants from, and I feel that they would feel that it was a necessary sentiment for us to make a move right for this. I do support Captain King, uh, far as with the police chief, but far as with the illman police chief, I think it would feel better if we go ahead and appoint him now. And then, like I said, we still have to go through the interview process. We still have to have a selection. And if that don't happen now, then we can reach back, that can be a term that we can revert back to.
If I could make some remarks, uh, we would not be setting a precedent so he decided to go in a different direction. I think it would be a wise decision for us to keep some stability within the force. I think that would be doing the, whether the new chief is injustice if he's brought in or she's brought in now in the eight months of new council. Probably, there's going to probably be some new folks up here with a new mayor. And that person would not have no tenure. I think it would be very wise for us to understand the makeup of what's going on, give Captain King the charge of leading our police department until, uh, the new administration comes into play. And that would take the warration out of whatever chief is selected at this point. I think Captain King has earned the right to, and I don't know why he didn't apply for the job himself.
I don't know either.
I think had he applied for the job, he would have gotten the job hands down. But nevertheless, he chose not to. I think at this point, it would be very crucial for us to keep the police department intact and ensure that the new person who comes in would not fall prey to a new mayor or a new administration.
Okay.
And I feel very strongly about it, Mr. President.
Okay.
We should not put that new, that new chief into a predicament such as not being able to, uh, go further than the eight months that they are selected for. Let's give John, Johnny King the charge and let's make him mayor.
Okay, that's going to be a slippery slope for me and Chair both committed, because that's the same thing with the fire chief. I mean, he have eight months also.
Yes.
So, we went through that interview process, we selected three, which, which I have no problem with Captain King. I've talked with him. But I think at this juncture, we need to move forward with the process. And not saying that the process would, you know, that we, that we were selected from the top three, not saying that. But there's some other avenues too that, uh, from the Public Safety Committee that we're looking at, uh, to help with the management of the police department. Councilwoman Jackson and Councilwoman Thomas.
Uh, I concur with Councilman LaShaw that, you know, Captain King has done a great job and he's stabilized on force at our department. However, where we differ is, you know, his heartfelt and very strong recommendation should have been brought to the council prior to the council initiating the, the process. I think now that the process has started, uh, to suggest that we overlook the applicants that took their time to put in their applications, they took their time to sit for the interviews, and now we are to say that we're, we're not going to look at them anymore. Um, I mean, the, the applicants, I would think, would understand the role of a chief, the role of a council and the mayor, and understand the election cycles in Alabama and how they work. And putting in that application, I would think that they would understand that this may be, um, uh, something that occurs, that they may, uh, or may not be in the position after, um, the new administration. And so, um, you know, Captain King chose not to apply, uh, for the position. I, I, I do feel, um, like my colleague, if he had, that it would have been a very easy decision. I don't know who the top three are. I wasn't, um, a part of the process, and I know that Councilwoman LaShaw was, but I would like to know, um, the recommendations I've read over all of the resumes, and I, I would like to see that process play out. And if, at some point, that the recommendation from the, the, um, safety, Public Safety Committee, that they don't receive any unanimous vote or majority vote on any of those, then we have the option of always reverting back and having that done. But I think the process needs to play out.
Because apparently, we have a great lot, you know, so that can be another avenue that we look at. Councilwoman, uh, Thomas, and I think Councilman Johnson and Councilwoman LaShaw. Councilwoman Thomas.
I'd like to say this to our colleagues, you know, we, uh, at, at times, like, every council had a chance to, uh, this was open for every council that wanted to, to serve as a leader on this board, to be present when we, uh, did these interviews, uh, like LaShaw was present and Councilwoman Benjamin was present. And we also had each, uh, the six candidates came in and we heard what they had to say. And we, uh, agreed to proceed with the, uh, selecting the three. And we also looked at, uh, we knew that, uh, the chief had told us that, uh, the thirtieth of this month was, uh, of last month, that he would be gone. And we, uh, like Captain King, have served as at the police department for many years. And he, I, I don't question his doubt of why he didn't apply, uh, but if we have a new chief in, you know, like the, uh, President Bowie said, that we had talked about some other things that this, uh, Public Safety Committee could bring, which other cities have, assisting with other, with the new chief. So, I think we, um, we moved on with the fire department, and I think that we should, uh, take in honor of what we started to do and, uh, look at Captain King to care us. But meantime, we need to look at if we bring on, bring on a new, uh, police chief, that we should have someone that who's a moral player, uh, long time in this city and know how to, to keep, that we need to keep our police department together.
Like Councilwoman Youngblood, I'm proud of him. Captain King is, I'm mad he didn't apply.
Yeah, well, 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 I'm getting it, and where I heard what I'm thinking on hand from, um, Mr. LaShaw, Councilwoman LaShaw. It wasn't about whether Captain King applied for the job. I think it's about where Captain King is trying to finish up the term where Chief Green is, is leaving, where I'm getting it. And I think what I'm also hearing, um, is that, um, um, there will be a new mayor or maybe the same mayor, in most likely, and also there may be some change in the council as well. Where, uh, the power may be moved back to the current mayor, uh, as possible. And we hate to see, uh, new chief in place, and all of a sudden, then the chief, it's supposed to move him out of town, then he just does eight months or whatever it is he ends up going back. So, uh, that's what I'm hearing. I'm not mistaken, that's what you asking or you saying? Not saying whether the chief, because I'm pretty sure this man was man enough, or if he was willing to be the, the chief, he would have applied. It ain't about that. It ain't about who he applied, it's just that letting him be the, uh, intern for eight months, if, if I'm getting you right, Councilwoman LaShaw, to, to...
Right, right.
Yeah, so, and I understand what you're saying too, Mr. President.
Okay, also too, let me, let me add to this Shakespeare stance. Uh, it's also with the department heads, they're month to month. So, if you have a department head who agreed to move in for everything Dallas County, they are going to understand that it's month to month. So, it's the same thing?
If I, if I could respond to my colleagues, you know, when you, you know, you live and you learn, and I had the opportunity to sit in on all of the interviews, or maybe except for the last one, I had a, with the call. But then you learn something new when you're not thinking. And because that one candidate posed the question, well, um, what if, um, a new mayor is reelected, or, or, or she just didn't have a feeling of any job security? And it really didn't dawn on me that there could be a strong possibility and probability that there will be a new mayor and new council, and they may want to sedate their own chief. We have an obligation to the citizen of Selma, Alabama. We don't have an obligation to candidates. Candidates are making themselves available for jobs that are available. I think we need to be considerate of the citizens of Selma, ensuring that Selma Police Department is on solid ground with leadership. And at this juncture, I think it would be a wise and very prudent decision for this council to appoint Captain King. He has served as an interim before, and he's very capable of handling the police department. We got to think of the ranking file, we got to think of the citizens of Selma, and for this council not to consider making him the interim, uh, chief of police for the next eight months until a new administration, a new council is seated, I think would be an unwise decision on our part.
Okay, well, we could just do that with Chief Green.
Yes, we could.
Councilwoman Youngblood, and then we'll call for the vote, because I know Councilman LaShaw has a vote on the floor.
I'm going to vote him the interim chief for the next eight months.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, um, I will, um, state I didn't know that there was a motion on the floor, so perhaps my, um, I, I was going to make a motion, but mine would be out of order inasmuch as there was a motion on the floor. But my, my, I will proffer that inasmuch as the, as a member of the Public Safety Committee, and inasmuch as we have interviewed, um, six, all, all of the six, any one of the six could be, could be a good job as our, um, chief of police. Um, and, and certainly Johnny King knows his and my friendship goes way far professionally and personally. We have a, a friendship, and we have a great personal relationship. I would be honored to see him as our chief. He did not apply as a, like, the chief or long-term interim chief, uh, and delighted to appoint him as the interim police chief. Pending, we have, have, have said in print, we have said up here, that we are going to, um, appoint a chief, uh, chief of police December the seventeenth, um, that we will be making an appointment, pending that, um, appointment. Um, and in the interest of, speaking of the interest of providing the best for, for safety for the citizens, some time ago, I guess about six to eight weeks ago, the city council approved a request to do a contract for Chief Green to, for John Brock, and it may have been for another officer, which I can't remember, former police officer. For whatever reasons there are, and I have heard through secondhand, but, so I'm not going to repeat that up here. But the, the city attorney kept it in his desk, and it was not, um, executed. But anyway, I have gotten a copy of the contract to go ahead and, um, it may be something needs to be changed on it, I've got to review it. But to go ahead, I'm going to ask that the, the council go ahead and, um, agree to discharge, to execute this contract for John Brock. Um, and I believe that, I, I don't want to speak for, for, well, I tell you what, I, I'm just going to table this to let you do this thing with, with, with the chief. But anyway, the other chief chiefs, so he'll always be chief to, because I, I worked with him when he served as chief before, which he's done.
All right, come to the procedure. Councilwoman LaShaw had a motion on the floor.
Excuse me, uh, Mr. President, would you be welcome?
Yes, I have a question.
And Councilwoman Thomas, don't get hurt too.
I'm, uh, look, I, Mr., uh, Councilwoman LaShaw, I, I don't know whether the votes going to be there. I think everybody got their passion, uh, for Chief, uh, King, uh, Captain King. But right now, I truly don't believe the votes going to be there. Councilwoman LaShaw, do you want to continue on with your, or you want to go draw it?
I had, uh, I had, uh, did not want to bring this subject out, but I've been hearing there've been some scud dugger activities among of my colleagues, that the decision has already been made who the new chief is. And if that's the case, it's, it's, it, it just don't fare well for the city. I hope and pray that it don't play out like that real way to see.
Well, like I, like I said, you always have to expect what to expect. I suggest that we're going to have three candidates. After the three candidates, we're going to engage the community, where the community have opportunity to meet the three candidates and ask questions. How transparent is that?
I think, I think it's okay to have, I would give you that name, you just don't prepare it until our come. Can you do that?
You don't want to make a motion, you want to...
Is there a... Yeah. I'm sincere about making Captain King the interim, uh, chief until August, the new election. Uh, if nothing else, whether job security or the chief, whoever is selected by this council. And, and as I said before, that was a legitimate concern by one of the candidates. And I never thought about that until that candidate brought it out, and I said, well...
I did.
Well, if there's a new mayor, and a new council, and the probability and the possibility of that happening, uh, that president very well not have job security.
Well, you just said that's not our concern, their job security. You just said that.
Well, it's not, but it would be faster than that.
But also too, there was a question, hold on, hold on, it was a question, hold on, it was a question that we asked also, do you know who will appoint?
Well...
The chief of police, and she said, the city council.
Yeah.
So, you know, an election is coming up, and we did mention that.
Yes. Listen, Mr. Mayor, I mean, Mr. President, yes, I have a motion on the floor, whether the vote up or down, I just want, for the record, my recommendation is that Captain King be the interim chief for the duration of this administration. Whether the new administration opportunity to select or choose whatever chief they so desire.
Councilwoman LaShaw have a motion on the floor?
I'll second it, but we're going to go with it.
We have a second by Councilman, uh, Johnson. Call, Councilman Bowley, then we will, uh, call for the vote.
I just had a question. What would be your idea for dealing with the folks who are going to interview?
Well, like I said, Councilman...
As far as that process beginning, beginning and all the rest of that stuff, I mean, I understand where you're coming from completely, I'm just wondering how you would, how you would negotiate that as far as...
We have, we wouldn't be nothing to presidents, it's not like this hasn't occurred before in the world. You know, things change.
Okay.
What's the liability associated with said change, is any?
There's no liability if there's not selecting a police chief.
Yeah, I'm aware.
There's not whatsoever.
I know, I'm just asking again.
If, 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 if Captain King is selecting interim chief for the duration of eight months, it's because this council changed its mind, and there's no liability to that effect.
Well, I just, if I, HR person, that's why I put HR person on the committee.
That's right.
I just want to ask...
Hold on, you have a follow-up?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
It seemed to me that if I'm...
Go ahead.
If I understood it correctly, we're still having computer issues at the police department?
Yes.
Now, again, I'm not making any allegations here, but it does seem odd that we are having still computer issues at the police department, considering that's pretty important operations for us, and we still have not fixed that problem yet. Now, to Mr. LaShaw's point, I wonder how much of that is intentional and how much of that is just, you know, just speculating, again, not saying one thing or the other, I'm just saying, you know, it's odd that our computer system at the police department aren't working yet. How many months later is that, since May? April? And, uh, and so, any person, whether it's the, the good man back there, or anybody else we try to get, is still going to have hell to pay when they don't have a computer system to upload anything to the state?
We got the arguments to be, though.
So, uh, yeah, it'd be nice to fix that problem, because that is paramount over whoever's going to be in that situation, where it's a good captain back there as interim eight monther, or, or whether it's the person we decide to hire on the seventeenth, or whatever the motion against care. But until we get clarity on that, you know, really is moot point.
Yeah. Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman Thomas, and then we don't talk for the floor.
I'm sorry, I think the president appears to be, to me, that we don't care about the fire department. We just did this when Chief Graham, we just said, um, we're going to select you, we're going to put you in the chief position, and in eight months, ten months at that time, the new administration don't want you, oh, we're sorry. We didn't think about that, for him, to make him interim for that length of time. And so, there may not be a legal question, but there appears to be, um, a difference between one sector of public safety and the other. And so, for that appearance not to be there, I think the process, um, should be carried out. And, and secondly, um, you know, we always have IT in the box. They're willing to help with the computer issues, they say they, they can get it back up within forty-eight, um, seventy-two hours, and so, it's been a lot of seventy-two hours. Just IT in the box.
Councilwoman Thomas can talk for the floor.
Okay, I just want to say this, you know, we all know the, the concerns of the citizen of Selma with the police department. And I think that, uh, we didn't waste time, uh, doing what we did, uh, which we did the same thing with the fire department. And I think that, uh, we need to know, to move on, to get this, this taken care of, because our public safety and someone that's running the police department, we need somebody to make sure that we, we saving our police department, because we need it. We need to do it.
Okay, Councilwoman LaShaw made the motion on the floor that, uh, we are going, Captain King for the duration of our, uh, term, which is eight months, and second by Councilman, uh, Johnson. What's the vote? Roll call.
President Bowie?
No.
Councilman Bowley?
Uh, just give me a second. I'll pass and come back to you.
Councilwoman Youngblood?
Um, I just had a brief conversation with, um, Chief King, who will always be my chief. And we have a, we have a process in place, that our president put in place, and it's been in place for how long, Mr. President?
Since August?
Right, considering that, and considering above all else, my conversation with Johnny King, who we should have consulted, who we should have considered, and whose feelings I would consider above all. My vote is no.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Jackson?
No.
Councilwoman Benjamin, Councilman Randolph, Councilman LaShaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
I have voted no.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Uh, let me just say this, go ahead. You know, um, both President Bowie and President, uh, Councilman LaShaw, both make sense, um, because I do, that, that do make sense, Councilwoman LaShaw saying, and also President Bowie, the process had already took place, um, and then what you talking, Council Youngblood talking to, uh, Chief, uh, Captain King, and, um, you know, because I really think that do make sense, because we have to go back all through this again, within so many months, because I'm pretty sure a lot of us won't be up here in a horrible show, it may be a new mayor. So, uh, my vote will be no.
Thank you. My second is what you say.
I actually have a motion on the floor to, uh, make Captain King, uh, interim chief for the first set of years. I have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Youngblood, second by Councilman Johnson. Any further discussion? Roll call.
President Bowie?
Yes.
Councilman Bowley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood?
After talking with, um, my chief King, um, about being interim and about helping us and his, based on his law for the city and, and his wanting the police department to improve after what all it's been through, my vote is yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin, Councilman Randolph, Councilman LaShaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes. All right, congratulations. Councilwoman Jack King.
No worries.
Congratulations.
Councilwoman LaShaw, you have a contract, I mean, Councilman Johnson's contract, recreation council?
Yes, uh, of course, and this is something ongoing for a while, uh, we've been, um, the youth football team, and I think the baseball, I think more the youth football now, is, uh, the umpire hadn't been paid in several weeks, maybe a month or so. And, uh, there's some money that, uh, we've been held up, because we need a contract to get them paid. I think the attorney already did the contract, uh, was been held up in the finance office, but I'd like to get this contract through, we'll move forward to pay these umpires.
Okay, yeah, I do agree that you need to pay these umpires, and I do concur with you, uh, one question. It's, uh, association make it out to, I don't want to call the names.
Right, correct.
Have we been, has it been the same for Matt before?
Yes, but it may have been a different person was in charge at a particular time, but, but yes, it was made out to that person, because I do have a, a tax number here also go along with it, because we got to handle a, I think, a W-9 and all the things that you, uh, do. So, this, yeah, we always made out to an individual, uh, to the, but you can talk to the finance, uh, division.
And this is for, uh, certified, certified umpires?
Yes, yes, uh-huh.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Councilwoman Jackson?
Uh, we're going to be meeting next week. You know, I said this the last time, um, that I thought when we first got here, that we used to put contracts on first read and vote on them at the next meeting. I would love to have an opportunity to read over this and ask any questions of them. If not, you can move by just abstaining for any contracts that I have not read.
Yeah, this is, this is real small, this been going on, people got been out there months for several weeks, three months now, uh, and this is something that we need to move forward, uh, getting these guys paid, they done their job, I think, it's just like grass, couldn't anything else, and we need to move forward, it's not like to move forward, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yeah, um, I just got one question. They, in the present, uh, we did a contract for the, the umpires like this?
All this is new, just like this...
Oh, but I'm just saying, I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I'm just saying, um, since I've been up here for three years, I've never, uh, dealing with the recor, under the Recreation Department, I've never seen the contract.
Yeah, this is the first time, I think, though, the contract now has been stipulated a lot of now on, so this is why...
Okay, that's why I wanted to know in the, in the past, how you just hand them.
No, it wasn't, I like to say, in the past, we had other, uh, directors in charge, and I think they had a question for that, so, you know, it was, you know, written up, got a process, never contract, why not be contract?
You got to do contracts.
Yeah, I know that. Contracts say attorneys all...
Correct, that's right, that's right.
You got it.
Right.
I was going to say, last year, we met with them and went over their contract for, for them to do those services for us, and we looked at that, I looked at it, and then we made the decision to move forward with that.
You was the, uh, chair of the...
So, we, we don't have to prove that based on information and the history and tradition of that contract. Right, I mean, it's basic change to personnel, we're on that contract, to make sure it read the way it needed to read, and so, it was approved that way.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Johnson, do we have a second? Second, Councilwoman LaShaw, any further discussion? Roll call.
President Bowie?
Yes.
Councilman Bowley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Stayed.
Staying.
Counselwoman Benjamin, Counselwoman Randolph, Counselwoman LaShaw?
Yes.
Counselwoman Thomas?
Yes, my, my say this on the record, based on what, uh, the former chairperson of the recreation said, that it has been done, he has approved it, looked over it, and, and the previous contract, so my vote will be yes, because of the former chairperson that said he done.
Counselwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, I think with Counselwoman Thomas.
All right, next we have, uh, holiday, holidays, I know Christmas is on a Tuesday, and I know, uh, Christmas Eve is on a Tuesday. Customarily, we give Christmas Eve and Christmas Day off, and I think, you know, in the personnel menu, it says to council vote on it, but I just want to just put it out there tonight, saying not, not saying we're going to vote on it, but we can vote on it Tuesday night, we just want to put it.
Well, I, I just want to give you some, uh, from what we doing from the, from the water work, now, the council can do what they want, uh, we, we, we decide to allow the, um, the workers to come a half a day on Christmas Eve, and that way they can take off, uh, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. They're going to work Christmas Eve, and, uh, well, I think they're going to work, I think they're going to work all day Christmas Eve, uh, uh, half a day, I can't remember one, but in the end, they're going to be off Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, from the water work, right, because they're going to work Christmas Eve.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Counselwoman Johnson, everyone put that form of vote.
It is, yes.
Yeah, according to the, uh, the handbook and the, uh, personnel handbook with the holidays, aren't they, uh, already have those days, uh?
No, they have Christmas, Christmas Eve, but if the council can vote, it is within our perimeter.
Okay.
Can vote to move forward with the holidays, but if that's the option that they would like to take, the council votes on the fact that I'm working Christmas Eve, but return Wednesday, Thursday, Friday out.
Yeah, it was, it was, they're working Christmas Eve, and all, uh, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Christmas.
And I'd like to make a motion to allow the city to do a hit.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor by Counselman Johnson, second, Counselman LaShaw, because I know I'm counting down December the seventeenth. We don't come back until the third of January, so. Any further, uh, questions?
I do want to.
All right, roll call.
President Bowie?
Yes.
Counselwoman Bowley?
Yes.
Counselwoman Youngblood?
Yes.
Counselwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Counselwoman Benjamin, Counselwoman Randolph, Counselwoman LaShaw?
Yes.
Counselwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Counselwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to ask, I know, I think, uh, every chief King has a few remarks he would like to bring, bring before the council.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Let me just tell, thank you, let me just say to Mr. LaShaw, thank you for your confidence in me, and I just want to say to the council president and all you all, thank you for your confidence. I'm not planning on going anywhere right now, I'm only there now because of the love that I have, I'm telling this Susan, this Youngblood, I didn't want to put this out there, but I'm, it's, it's only because of love, and I want to see the police department get back to where it used to be, where I came in the eighties. Uh, I, I did sixteen years under Mayor Smilman, and now I'm just twenty years on this side of him, so, I've been out a long time, yeah, I went to my friend's funeral, I'm going to show it to you, man, good friend, shared, shared real funeral today, and that's kind of got, got me emotional.
Right.
And so, I don't know how, but I'm going to stay around a little while, but I want the president to know that, uh, I talked to retired citizens of Alabama, I'm losing about a thousand dollars of money pumping at the police department.
I got you.
So I'm only there for love.
I got to be loved, that's right.
That's all I'm doing there. You know, you lose a thousand dollars of money a month, that's, that's good money. And so, I've been out there for thirty-five years, and I want to just thank Mr. LaShaw, and I, and I'm not going to say in this setting as to why I did not apply, but I will tell the council privately, because this is not the proper place to, to say it, but I'm not going to run off, I'm not going anywhere, we're going to do a good job over there, make sure the ship is held in high water, I'm, I'm not going to change anything, I'm going to come there, whoever the new chief is, here she is, I'm willing to work with them. All, I got to tell you all, let's see, I'm not going to call the name, I want to tell you that the candidates that were local, asked me to help, they want my, asked me for my help, and I appreciate that. They said, would you please help me? And I said, I wouldn't mind doing it, because that's what I am, uh, if those who know me, I'm a Christian man who love God, and I, I just can't do some things that I can't do. I'm not a precious person, I can't mistreat white people, and I can't mistreat black people. So I just can't do that, I'd rather, you know, I'd rather just get out of town before I do that, I'm not going to mistreat black people. And that's all I'm around here, here, here now, uh, because of love, and this place is so good, the ci, I'm going to tell you, this city's been so good to, so good to me. Nineteen eighty-four, today, it's been great to me. And I, I, I'm only there for love, and I just want to see, I just want to see it done right right now, and it ain't about me.
It ain't about, it ain't, it ain't about, it ain't about me.
The citizens, the citizens serve, serve and deserve the best.
Right.
You know, and I want to see what come there, and, and I understand what Mr. LaShaw's saying, what he say, because whoever here she is, these seven months here, because whatever we say, or she say, the mayor's in charge of the day-to-day operation of the city itself. You know, and that's just the way, that's just the way it is, but, as I close, come here, I want to just say to, I'm going to go around the line, Counsel, Counselwoman Thomas, thank you for your, she called me in touch, and these seven, my, my, my phone, Mr. Counsel, President Bowie, my phone is open twenty-four-seven, you've always called me, even Chief Green there, Ms. Counselwoman Jackson, Mr. LaShaw, who's a friend I've known for years and years and years, I consider family, Ms. Benjamin, and all of you, especially Ms. Pete, I want to give a little motion, and Ms. Johnson, all go back in years, uh, there's some things that didn't happen the way I like, but none of the council, I want to let you know, none of the council did to me. None of any councilman did, did to me. There's some a little bit deeper than that, and, and I want, like I said, I don't want to say in this setting, because it's not appropriate setting in here, but I would not go anywhere soon, thank you for your confidence, uh, I'm going to do things right, I'm a tight person, I'm a communicative.
That's right.
And what that simply means, that I, I, I want to treat people the way I want to be, be treated, to be treated. And, and I just don't like the image of where things are going around here now, I want, you know, I just don't like the way things going in there. I believe in treating people, treating people right, the way I want to be, the way I want to be treated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see the human resource, uh, expert is in the, is in the room. Uh, there's nothing, and because you correct me, there's nothing binding this council to move forward on these six applications.
That's true.
They can reject it and open it up again, and Captain King can apply.
That's true.
So I would highly recommend that this be given some serious consideration. Captain King is the man for the job, you all gave him confidence as interim before, you giving him confidence in interim now, what make him not capable of doing the permanent chief? And I just want this council to, to, to be aware, simply because you going through the interview process, simply because you going through, uh, one to ten, that do not bound you to, uh, do anything other than what you feel is right, and that, and therefore, I'm going to recommend that the, uh, process be narrowed more, and open it up again.
I'm glad to say that, I just went through an interview process at the college, which I was part of the committee, we went through the interview process, and, um, we select three finalists, and after they went to the top, he felt that they didn't meet the criteria, but you followed the process. And then, by the fact that, you know, he didn't agree with the three applicants, then we opened it back up, but the essential thing is, we went through the process.
Yeah, but there's politics and motion, as I spoke earlier, and I'm going to talk to the president about this, I'm going to, uh, ask him to keep that in confidence until we see how this thing play out.
Oh, yeah.
And I feel very confident that what I was told is being, is being done by certain council. But Captain King, I want to thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I'm glad to hear that you ain't going nowhere. Your ability to run the police department is very obvious, and I just hate that you did not apply for whatever the reason, and I'm not going to ask you those reasons. That was your choice, and I respect that.
Yes, sir.
But I just want this council to know that all is not lost by not giving you an opportunity there, uh, by just narrowing of all the process.
Okay, Counsel, Counselwoman Jackson, you have a second? Counselwoman Johnson, I call for the adjournment.
Okay.
Hello.
No, I just, you know, we all meet people out in, in the community, people walk up to you and tell you things that you don't even know, and we're part of the committee, true enough, what he, he say, people say, people call names, and you don't even know who, if the, if the committee has picked the three, so I don't understand how the citizens can go out in the public and give names out, because they ever came up to me and asked me, and I said, I don't know nothing about that. So, that's, that's closed case.
Um, I think again, Captain King did not go for the job at his own volition, I mean,